Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon who was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item one, Ron Crocker, JCPN.
Mr. Crocker, I turn the meeting over to you.
All right, I am allowing him to talk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Ron Crocker, I'm with Jersey Central Power and Light, and I just wanted to share with the mayor and the council members how JCPN is handling this COVID pandemic. We understand that residents may be going through a hardship financially with a lot of people being unemployed right now. So during this time, we will not be disconnecting anyone's power due to non-payment. You may receive a letter in the mail because those are generated automatically, but we will send no one out to disconnect your power during this time. We do suggest that if anyone is having trouble paying their electric bill, to contact the electric company and let them know that you're having trouble paying their bill. Maybe we can put you on a twelve-month equal budget plan, or we can put you in touch with agencies that are assisting people with paying their electric bill. Besides that, meter readers, they're going out reading meters every month. They are not entering your home or your garage to read a meter, so if some residents have their electric meters inside, we will not be going inside to read anyone's electric meters, so those meters will be estimated at this time. Besides that, our line crews are out there working every day. They're reporting remotely in small groups to practice social distancing. We're still doing our improvements on the system, we're still doing all of our tree trimming. Everything else is business as usual, trying to be as safe as possible. The number of positive tests that we had within the company is currently less than one percent of our employees at JCPN. So we're doing very well keeping our employees safe, and we're trying to extend that to the public and making sure everybody's as safe as possible. And we're not inconveniencing anybody in any kind of way. That's all I had for you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Crocker?
Yep, thanks, Ron, thanks for your information, we appreciate all that JCPN is doing for all the residents during this crisis, and we appreciate all your time, so thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
You too.
Item two, request to post ribbons on utility poles honoring graduating classes.
The high school TTSA is looking to do a senior celebration committee, and they would like permission to put ribbons up on the telephone poles in the month of June to celebrate graduations for senior graduation, eighth grade commencement, and all of the students and staff in our school district. So they feel that while yes, we may in the near future have the opportunity to have graduations, they do want to put the Navy SEAL ring ribbon on the poles on Lacy Road Route nine Main Street in Manchester, so I just need a motion to approve that.
Sure.
All favor.
Aye.
Resolution for outdoor dining areas.
Okay, obviously, hopefully in the near future, the governor will be loosening up some restrictions related to allowing outdoor dining, and obviously that's not addressed in our code, and based on the fact that you need cycling and people to do it, we're gonna, you were looking to do it as a special use permit. So I was looking to have a committee adopt a resolution setting some guidelines which have been drafted. We utilized Bricks, Tom's Rivers, code enforcement, the director of community development, and the zoning officer have reviewed it, and we've come up with a three-page directive with how we can handle the outdoor dining to assist those restaurants that could possibly start to open back up and, you know, start to get some patrons after store. So I know someone's had the opportunity to review it, Mr. Connors's office has reviewed it as well, so they were comfortable with it. So I just want to get ahead of this instead of trying to do it once the governor approves it.
Just wanted to know some clarification, because I had also seen where Bricktown was proposing an ordinance rather than a resolution. And there's some misconception out there that Bricktown is doing this in lieu of the governor's approval. Bricktown's ordinance is to be enacted after the governor changes his guideline. So they're not opening up, or they're not allowing restaurants to have outside dining until such time as the governor allows that action within the state. So I just wanted to clarify that for anyone who has that question.
We'll also be waiving the fees as well.
Yes.
I have a question for you. Do we act away from him?
Yes, yes.
Because you said anybody that disobeys, it's a petty disorderly persons, and that goes on your record, correct?
Correct, and then within the framework of his emergency orders, of course, any governing body is obligated to certainly enact ordinances and policies that are consistent with the emergency orders. And you could subject individual committee members to liability as well, but you can't usurp his authority, can't open it up. You can restrict it, if you weren't opening up, you could prohibit it. Just as lakes and boardwalks, when he opened it up, can still be closed by the municipality, but you can't open what he's closed.
Do you think he'll have guidelines to follow?
I'm not so sure, he'll have guidelines, I'm sure, that he'll have guidelines, just as he did with lakes and rivers and beaches and so forth. He established guidelines that must be followed, you can have more stringent guidelines, but you can't have any less than that. And they're going to be for sanitation, social distancing, and those types of things, he may have. But I would certainly commend the governing body administrator for getting ahead of the curve, because, you know, businesses in town should be able to plan how they're going to go about doing it, if and when it is open, and this kind of gives them a guideline that I think will be compatible with whatever the government, whatever the government comes up with.
And I'm sure restaurants out there are planning as well.
It does have something in here about elements of the weather and to make sure that everything is. Yeah.
That's, okay.
Yeah, that, that part, yes.
Moving right along.
All right, so what I'd like to do is add this to the council agenda as an add-on tonight, for consideration, everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, so there's no further business on the caucus agenda? All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor.
Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon who was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item one, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty eleven, establishing a cap.
In order to attach a placing county motion statement, does the authorized three key missile budget appropriations on the end establish a cap? And JSA forty-eight, call it, would get five point fourteen. This is the normal ordinance that we do every year with regards to the annual budget, this is second reading, we need to open the floor to second reading. Mr. Leidl?
Yes, at this time, we will be accepting public comment. Anyone who would like to comment should virtually raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the Zoom view screen and finding the raise your hand button on the bottom of your Zoom app. However, if you are calling in via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star plus nine. You will be calling, you will be called to speak in turn.
This is only on the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven. Any comments?
Seeing none.
All right.
Seeing none, motion closed.
Seeing none, motion closed.
Second.
All favor. Motion on the ordinance, please.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty twelve, authorizing the conveyance of temporary easement to the county motion block sixteen seventy-six, lot one.
In order to attach a placing county motion statement, does the authorized events of temporary destruction on a portion of block sixteen seventy-six, lot one, to the county motion for deconstruction of a portion of Manchester Avenue, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, call it, dash, for TV. This is for the enhancements that the counties want from the intersection of Western all the way up to the intersection of Lacy Road. They need to acquire temporary construction improvements, and the second one will need to acquire some additional properties. This is the second reading, we need to open the floor up to public comment, Mr. Leidl?
Right, should, anyone who would like to comment should virtually raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the Zoom view screen and finding the raise your hand button on the bottom of your Zoom app. However, if you are calling in via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. You will be called to speak in turn. I see one hand raised, hold on one moment. Regina Duzenza, please state your name and address and begin your public comment.
Hi, Regina Duzenza, I'm six drive Sunrise Beach. I don't really have a comment except that the audibility of Veronica changed in the last few seconds. She wasn't as clear as she initially was.
I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, I think it's better if you speak directly to your computer.
I can unmute because we'll have too much feedback in the room.
Okay, but when you speak, speak to your left, not to your right, kinda, if that's the way to describe it.
No problem, my bad.
To your left, okay.
All right, so I gather there's no comments on this ordinance, Tom?
Yes, seeing none.
Second.
Motion on the ordinance, please.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana? Mayor Kennas?
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty thirteen, authorizing the conveyance of a portion of an unimproved right-of-way to the county motion.
In order to attach a placing county motion statement, does the authorized the conveyance of a portion of an unimproved right-of-way of the township of Lacy to the county motion for the reconstruction of a portion of Manchester Avenue, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, call it, twelve, dash, thirteen, B. Again, this is the conveyance of a portion of the property in order for some road widening purposes from Manchester Avenue to Adams Street for the enhancements that they're making on Manchester Avenue. Open the floor to public comment, Mr. Leidl?
All right, if you would like to raise your hand to speak, please move your mouse to the bottom of your Zoom app and click the raise your hand button. Or if you're on telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine, you will be called to speak in turn. Seeing none.
Motion to close the floor?
Second. All favor.
Motion on the ordinance, please. Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Juliana? Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one thirty-six, authorizing the budget to be read by title only.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, does the authorized the reading of the budget by title only, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana? Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Right now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Linda Cavello, our CFO, who will give a brief rundown of the two thousand and twenty municipal budget that we're presenting for adoption tonight. Ms. Cavello?
Okay, you can hear me now?
We got you.
Yes.
Okay, how is everybody doing? Tonight, we are adopting, finally, with no change to the introduced budget, and we are still on time and within caps for the twenty twenty budget. We are going to have our appropriations sit at thirty-two million eight hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. That's a slight increase over last year's appropriations. We are still on time and within caps. That said, the tax increase is at one point three cents. What does that mean for the homeowner? If you're assessed at the average assessed home at two seventy-nine, four hundred, you can expect to pay an extra forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents annually, or ten dollars and thirty-three cents per quarter in your municipal taxes on your tax bill in the upcoming year. We are not deferring school taxes again, I don't know how many years in a row now that's been, but I have not done that since I've, believe, I took the CFO title. We're just going to utilize more surplus to support the budget, and obviously, a little small tax increase, and that's all I have.
Committee members have any questions before we? I just need a motion to open the floor for public comment. Second?
Second.
All favor. Right, Mr. Leidl, we will open the floor to public comment for comments on the twenty twenty municipal budget.
At this time, we will be accepting public comment. Anyone who would like to comment should virtually raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the Zoom view screen and finding the raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom app. However, if you were calling in via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. You will be called to speak in turn. Just going to give them one more moment. Okay, seeing none, I suppose.
Motion to both the floor. Second.
All favor.
Okay, we can move on to item number six.
Resolution twenty nineteen one thirty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty municipal budget.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, adopting the local municipal budget of the township of Lacy for the fiscal year twenty twenty. The general appropriations for municipal purposes, thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight, thirty-one million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Reserve for uncollected taxes, one million three hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Total general appropriations is thirty-two million eight hundred and fifty dollars, thirty-two million eight hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Less the anticipated revenues of seventeen million two hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, and the amounts to be raised for, by taxes for the support of the municipal budget is fifteen million six hundred and seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Motion to adopt the twenty twenty municipal budget.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
No.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Right, we have adopted the budget.
Did anyone have one to comment on the budget for you long?
I'd be optimistic, this was the budget that had to present best, March third, I think the day was.
March fifth was our.
March fifth, I would go though on it, but through the circumstances of the pandemic and so forth like that, we anticipated losses shredding. This is as good as we're gonna, as soon as we're gonna do, and I just think, well, thank Veronica, I want to thank Linda. The council committee have done a lot of hard work and sacrificed a lot of things here. That's all, thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that, you know, obviously, it seems like it wasn't that long ago, but I guess it wasn't. It, things have changed, and I want to commend all department heads. We've had a couple of good years, you know, I've been, as I've mentioned before, I've been here longer than all of you, except for Veronica, and actually, Senator Connors. And I've seen good days and good years, and I've seen bad years. We had some good years, and we were able to take care of our department heads and take care of the township, and, you know, unfortunately, this year, we had to cut back, and I appreciate that, you know, our department heads understood that for the most part, and I certainly appreciate Ms. LaRae and Linda Cavello for the hard work they did, and hopefully, next year will be better, and I, confident it will be, thank you.
You know, I just want to also echo some of those comments, an extremely challenging budget this year. We're tasked with trying to project what our revenue is from our, sort of, our outside sources, and it's really very difficult to, you know, doing, during this whole coronavirus, to figure out how much the building department's going to bring in, the rec department, the courts, they're all basically shut down for three months now. So I also want to commend Linda and Veronica especially for a lot of time, a lot of time working on a budget, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, if I could, Steve, mayor, you know, we, we had our budget, we had line items picked out, we normally would have passed the budget by now this year. COVID came, turned everything upside down, the five of us and our department head, Linda Cavello, and Administrator LaRae. We went back to the table, we made cuts that were uncomfortable, but as Committee Man Dykoff said, who's been here a long time, we're hopeful that tax receipts arise in the future as we get this pandemic behind us, and there are going to be other years. This isn't the last year, we're going to be able to, God willing, move forward on some of the hires and capital improvement projects, vehicles that are needed by the people in this town to do a good and safe job. They've been taking care of us for a very great many years. Look forward to trying to do that again, especially next year when this is behind us, and I'm confident we'll have a vaccine and it'll be behind us. Thanks, mayor.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty ten, authorizing the twenty twenty bond ordinance for the twenty twenty capital projects and equipment.
In order to attach a placing county motion statement, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating three million five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars therewith, and authorizing the issuance of two million six hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred dollars in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the township of Lacy. This is our twenty twenty capital request, there is acquisition for fire and EMS equipment. There is an acquisition of public safety, heavy-duty vehicles, and records management systems, acquisition of heavy-duty public, public works vehicles, road improvements to Capstan Drive, which is offset by a four hundred thousand dollar grant, road improvements to Nola's Boulevard, offset by a three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar grant, engineering for northeast Barnigan Pines, road improvements for phase two, dredging of Wardens Oyster Pond, recodification of the code book, acquisition of various capitals and equipment for the police and emergency services radio system for our bond ordinances and our projects for this year. So this is second reading, we need to open the floor to public comment, Mr. Leidl?
If you would like to speak, please use your mouse to find the raise your hand button on the bottom of your Zoom app. However, if you're calling via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine, you will be called to speak in turn. Seeing a hand raised, hold on one moment. Paul Dressler, please state your name and address and begin your public comment.
Paul Dressler, seventy Arbor Ridge Drive, just regarding this bond, I'd be for also included with new police vehicles, which I know has been used for over the years.
Yes, the bond ordinance does include vehicles for the police department, yes, there's going to be four vehicles purchased with this bond ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional comments?
No, that was good, thank you very much.
No problem. Any other members in the public wish to make any comments?
I see no hand raised, so seeing none.
Motion closed the floor.
Second. All favor.
Motion on the ordinance, please.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yeah.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty one thirty-eight, authorizing the employment of summer seasonal laborers.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works. These are our summer youth workers that we are bringing back for the summer, there is five of them, Matthew Milton, Kevin Hayes, John Softlaw, Christopher Fino, and Brady Carter, can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one thirty-nine, appointing members to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, appointing members to the Veterans Commission. I spoke with our chairman of the commission, and we're adding some people and removing some people, so the members as of we stand today would be Bernard Snyder, Pete Forchester, Kenneth Hanson, Tom Verleza, Ryan Hall, Michael Kilmarie, Donald Toll, Robert Surtis, and Dennis Hammerly. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty one forty, certifying the LoSAP recipients for the two thousand and nineteen calendar year.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, certifying the list of volunteer firefighters and emergency service squad members who have qualified to link the Service of Work Program benefits for the calendar year of twenty nineteen. This is a program that we put in place approximately in nineteen ninety-four with regards to those volunteer and service members. So any members that are being paid by a squad now, such as Lacy or Lenoka Harbor, do not qualify for continuing LoSAP membership. And that is screened and checked on the list. That was the effect of the day they start to become paid, right? So there's a total of a hundred and eighty-two members, and it's a hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred dollars. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-one, authorizing estimated tax bills for the third installment.
This is the precautionary resolution, until the state allows us to print our bills, I have to do this just in case. Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to prepare and issue estimated tax bills for the third installment of the twenty twenty taxes, can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-two, amending the contract with TruGreen.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, amending a contract to TruGreen, a limited partnership for seasonal turf utilization program for the township of Lacy. We need to add some additional sites to our current ongoing contract. We never had the Department of Community Development added on our site initially, once, when the MUA was taking care of it. We have a general common sign area in Forkett River, and the community hall was never part of it, so I just need to add those three sites, motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-three, authorizing an amendment with Swift and Sons, Inc., for the Railroad Avenue Extension Phase Two, authorizing the release of deposit monies.
What, outside down there, like that? Okay, resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with Swift and Sons for the Railroad Avenue Extension Phase Two project. This is the final change order and final quantities, and there's only one change order. The initial contract price was seven hundred and thirty-three thousand fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents. We had a decrease of fifty-seven thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, so we came in well under contract with that. So I just need a motion to authorize this change order. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-four, authorizing the release of a performance bond for see-throughs at Lacy off-site area.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee for see-throughs at Lacy off-site area conditional upon the posting of a maintenance bond. This is based on the recommendation of the township engineer, they have gone out to review the off-site area and has authorized it to go to a maintenance bond, motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-five, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the municipal building roof project.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee for LR Watts and Sons Roofing and Construction Incorporated for the municipal building roof project, can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty one forty-six, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the railroad avenue extension phase two project.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the railroad right-of-way Phase Two project issued by Swift and Sons Incorporated. And this is upon the posting of a maintenance bond, which I've already received.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-seven, authorizing the release of a performance bond for road opening permit four eight one eight.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by Samuel Brand for road opening permit number four eight one eight at ten twenty-three Chelsea Street, motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-eight, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit monies held for the use of municipal facilities.
Easy come, easy go.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty one forty-nine, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacy County motion statement, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Extension, please.
Staying on H, forty-seven, forty-six.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes, abstaining on M O, M zero two three zero.
And Mayor Kennas?
Yes, one through the courts.
I only have one, and this is for the month of April, and this is showing you how bad it is.
Yeah.
Municipal court receipts, three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents. Normally, we're around twenty-five thousand a month. So motion to accept the reports is ready.
Moving. Second.
All favor. Motion to approve a raffle license amendment for the Southern Ocean Rotary Club. Second. All favor. Motion to approve township meeting minutes of May fourteen, twenty twenty. Moving, second. All favor. Motion to.
Motion to caucus meeting minutes of May fourteen, twenty twenty?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I have a head on, it's the one we talked about at caucus, it will be resolution one fifty-one. The resolution of Township Lacey County, motion to stand in New Jersey, establishing guidelines for temporary outdoor dining. So when the governor sets some restrictions with regards to outdoor dining, we will be helping those restaurants that can provide some outdoor dining. And again, it's only going to be for establishments that currently have interior dining. So if you don't currently have, you're not going to be allowed to do, um, have the outdoor dining. This has been reviewed by our Department of Community Development, and there will be approval processes in place and quickly turnaround time to help these establishments once the governor opens up the window to allow such. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted people to, you know, as we move on and go forward with this Covid nineteen virus, I want people to keep it into perspective. You know, we got six hundred thousand people in the county. Look at the Health, Ocean County Health Department website, there's about eighty-five, eighty-six hundred positives. That's about one point four percent since that department has been keeping measure the last ten or twelve weeks. A lot of those folks presumably are recovered. So you're talking about one point three, one point four percent. Are there more positives? Yes. Have we tested everybody in, in the county? No. But it's important to rationalize and, and have, have an equal level of fear, but also to be knowledgeable and diligent, uh, and to be able to live your life. So I implore our governor to let our state open. There's ancillary things going on with alcohol, drug abuse. You know what kills people? Poverty kills people. Keeping abusers in a house with somebody kills people. So I'm a proponent of opening up. I'm not saying, nor are my comments veiled in any way, to break laws. We are a compliant group of people here in Lacey Township. People have come up to me, my colleagues sitting up here tonight, there's a lot of pain out there, people need to earn a living. We, like I said last time we were here. We put a guy on the moon fifty-two years ago, we ought to be able to open a shoe store in Lacey. There's enough brain power here to do it. If anybody wants to get tested, Urgent Care Now New Jersey is public service announcement. Go to www.urgentcarenownj.com or call six zero nine nine seven eight zero two four two. Option two, uh, to schedule a visit. You need a driver's license or, or, and a valid social, social security card. Call them, uh, they're located across the street from Walmart in Lidl, five thirty-nine North Main Street, Route Nine. They have offered to do, uh, testing for Lacey Township residents. We're grateful they stepped up to do that. I was on a conference call with Freeholders this afternoon, our mayor, our administrator. I wanted to report that the New Jersey Economic Development Commission has paved the way for small businesses to get relief. Any small businesses that have not received the relief in the first batch or were waitlisted, this is for you. And it's up to ten thousand dollars for small business, businesses that apply and get approved. Right on the website, it says, if you go on there right now, it's the first hit on Google, relaxed eligibility criteria. And this phase, phase two are for businesses that got waitlisted in phase one. It includes home-based businesses, sole proprietorships, uh, businesses up to twenty-five employees and nonprofits. So I want, uh, people and our businesses that are hurting and employ our neighbors, please look at that. I want to thank Ron Crocker and JC P and L for the comments that that company made earlier about not turning off. We know there's a lot of people hurting, about forty million on unemployment now. What people don't need is their electricity turned off, so I applaud them, they're standing up, they're being good citizens and a good public utility. I want to thank all the colleagues that did a lot of hard work on this very difficult budget. We try to take care of everyone, it's impossible sometimes. And I'm looking forward, Mayor, when the day this Covid is over and done with. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Committee Man Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. As Committee Man Curatolo said, Governor Murphy's got to start opening up some businesses here, because a lot of them are starting to suffer more and more, and, uh, a lot of them are going out. And as the company I work for, you know, we've seen it in the end of even the big box stores, we're starting to feel a little bit of it, because the people are not feeling coming in there. But I think we need to really, and I think this, um, outdoor dining is, is a step in the right direction, because the restaurants are getting hit the hardest in the industry in Ocean County, they're all hurting. But I think this might help them if these try to get things, you know, motivated in their business and outside. It's the perfect time of the year to be outside anyway, in the summertime, so that'll be good. I'd like to thank all the first responders, the doctors, the nurses, the firemen, the police officers, everything they're going through, through this Covid nineteen, it's not been pretty. We just, uh, our family just lost our aunt to it, uh, at ninety-five years old, I mean, I'm sorry, ninety-seven years old. She caught it while she was in a nursing home, uh, Marie's sister, my mother-in-law's sister. So it's kind of, um, it's hitting everybody in every direction. She was perfectly healthy, but she caught it, and that was it. Three days later, she passed away. So it, I just want to thank all of the first responders out there, they're doing everything they can and putting their own lives in danger to get the things done that we need to do. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Committee Man McDonald?
Yes, uh, I'm going to implore Governor Murphy to cancel the tolling on the Parkway. I mean, this is just, you know, why don't we just throw some salt in the wound on top of it? This is just absurd.
Make sure you opened up the tolls for a world, I guess, for sure.
What the hell are they thinking of? It just doesn't make any sense for me, I don't understand it. But I guarantee, nobody in New Jersey is anything except those guys. So I, I just got to implore them to cancel this thing until we get back on our feet. I also would implore them to open up this state a little bit and get it going. I'm going to implore the people that have been reading the papers, we have, you know, people are getting antsy out. And just take a deep breath and calm down and walk away. I mean, you know, who's going out, out there in Minneapolis, that's just, that's atrocious. And, and, and I don't want to see that happen here in Lacey. So just hold your temper, walk away, and go for another day. People, the pressure's on all of us, and some of us actually act differently, so I would just implore that. The county and the grants for the small business, how, how important is that? And you're starting now to see the money that came out of the federal government, just six trillion dollars, down to the states, and the states are pushing it down into the counties. So you're going to start seeing this stuff open up, but this could be a false dilemma in the fact that what happens with the money from them. So just, just help everybody that you can, the restaurants, as, as Committee Man Juliana says, they got, we need to help them out as much as possible. When they open up, it's going to be different, so just go with it. Something we haven't talked about in a while, and I had a conversation with him, I talked to Ms. LaRae about it, is, is our recreation plant. Demo Island is ready, and chomping at the bit to open up and get going. He's got plans for every conceivable, conceivable way, no intent it will be flawless. So once we can get the approval from the governor and start doing these things, watch out, get this thing open, get the recreation, get the camp open. Unfortunately, it will be on Friday trips for obvious reasons, but it is what it is, so we'll get moving on that. And I do want to talk a little bit about the budget real quick, as I said in the comments. That's, that, this was not the budget I wanted to pass. Not going to go on this in any way, shape, or form. However, sometimes it's the necessity that we have to do these things to protect the township involved. So like, hopefully, next year, we can do what we had planned this year, and then some more, so we can get back. If this economy can recover fast enough and get back, and if our financial situation isn't as bad, we're better than we think it's going to be. And I think if that's the case, I think next year we can really get into the budget a little bit better and get some of the things that we, we promised the people. Unfortunately, we had to walk away from it for the benefit of the town. So Mayor, that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Committee Man Dykoff?
So you've all pretty much touched on all the important items, the budget, um, opening up, so I want to talk about something really important. I want to wish Committee Man Juliano and his lovely wife Peggy Sue a very happy forty-second anniversary.
That's it?
We saved it.
I took, I took, I took a page from Gary Quinn, he used to do it to me all the time.
Thank you, my first.
Right?
Nick, you want to say something? I think he, I think he said.
God bless.
Yes, I'm going to touch on pretty much what everybody said regarding small business. Freeholders working in conjunction with the New Jersey EBA are, are establishing this, way to get grants to small businesses, and I just want to make sure that everybody that's listening, that, you know, get the message out, so any of your friends that own small businesses in Lacey will apply for these grants. I'm on a conference call every Tuesday with the governor's office and with the Atlantic County mayors, Cape May mayors, and OSHA county mayors. And we're all constantly complaining to open up the economy a little bit more. We know how important the small businesses are to, to certainly this part of these, uh, this part of the state. So, um, we're beating the drum on that. And I do want to make, I'm not sure if we are meeting scheduled next month, is it one?
Right now, I have one scheduled, but I was going to break the news to you that I would like to schedule a second one, because as of June twenty-third, I can start awarding some of our projects based on the capital items. So I would like to have one the fourth, third, Thursday of the month, because I don't want, I want to get some of my paving projects started instead of delaying everything into the fall. So I will be looking to have one on the second, um, Thursday, and we can discuss the time if you want it earlier in the day, and.
Well, it's only for my comments, I just want to, I guess, and if we're having meetings, the schedule was. And I just, I want to wish all the seniors that have graduated from high school best of luck. And it's, um, it's unfortunate that they didn't have a proper end of the year. They missed out on a lot of things, and, um, especially my son Trey. And, and I just want to make sure that, that all the kids this year are acknowledged some way. Hopefully, they will be able to do some sort of graduation, but if we do not have a meeting before then, they, you know, school ends. I just wanted to acknowledge all the, the students and the teachers and the administration at the schools for a harrowing three months. So those are my comments, and now I'll open it up to the public.
Mr. Mayor, could I have one, one comment if I could?
Second time you're doing this.
I'm telling you, this is for the businesses, for the Economic Development Authority or, uh, the, the County Financial Bureau. Is there a link that we could put up on our website?
I'm waiting for the documentation from the county to be sent down that I can share with the public. They will be, um, providing it. They said they might not have it for another week.
That's fine, thank you.
But as soon as I get it, I'm going to take care of that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Administrator LaRae, all good.
Open up to the public?
Tom, can you open the floor to the public for me, please?
At this time, we will be accepting public comment. Anyone who would like to comment should virtually raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the Zoom view screen and finding the raise your hand button on the bottom, bottom of your Zoom app. However, if you are calling in via telephone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. You will be called to speak in turn. We'll see a few hands, hold on one moment. Regina DeSenza, please state your name and address and begin your public comment.
Hello, Regina DeSenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I just want to say those were very interesting statistics from the health department that Pete read off. We are very fortunate here in Ocean County for the most part, and it is unfortunate what the Covid has done to all of the various economies and all the various towns. And I hope some more businesses can get up and running very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, uh, one moment. Uh, oops. Hold on a second. Paul Dressler, uh, please state your name and address and begin your public comment.
Yeah, Paul Dressler, seventy Arbor Ridge, Forkett River. Again, just to follow up on Regina, thanks, Peter, for all the information you gave and what we need to do about this virus, and hopefully it will open up things.
Now, Paul, it's everybody, I'm one guy up here, it's, my colleagues are, it's everybody, thank you.
I just appreciate what you did. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, I see none.
Do you want to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2020-150 authorizing the convening of an executive session.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion to stand in Jersey, authorizing the convening of executive sessions to discuss anticipated pending litigation and matters of real estate. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.[1782.64]